Thank you so much.
Okay, well, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the town of Pownell Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. I'll give you an overview via our agenda as to what we're going to talk about tonight. The first thing we're going to do is entertain any public comment after we approve, excuse me, after we approve this agenda, we're going to entertain any public comment. We're going to review our minutes from May 15th and hopefully be able to approve those. We might not have enough people who were at that meeting to do that, but we'll take a look at it. Then we're going to go to our guest Jim Sullivan, the Executive Director of the PCRC, who's also our consultant on changing our bylaws. And that is probably should be listed under Old Business. He'll be a regular here. He hopes not for the next two years or anything like poor Michael Batchelor was. And then we'll talk updating the new bylaws is what we're going to discuss with Jim Sullivan. That is the number six under New Business. And then I'm going to pass around the rules of procedure so that everybody that was that is listed on there, all the Planning Commission members can sign those. Just a formality, not an official. It does not require a vote. So having said that, and you all have a copy of the agenda in front of you, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay. We have, all right, we'll say Jim Winchester made the motion at the exact same time Barbara did, so we'll give it to Jim because he's closer. Megan seconded that. Any further discussion regarding the agenda? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. We moved public comment up so people don't necessarily have to suffer through the entire meeting. If you want, just hanging out, okay, good enough. All right, let's take a look at the minutes of May 15th. They're pretty straightforward.
There's four of us here who are at that meeting. Is that a court?
No, no, no. So I'll entertain a motion to table those.
I'm sorry, is this May 21st or the 15th?
Oh, I think she, no, we only had a meeting on the 21st. I think Jessica made a mistake when she did that.
Okay.
So we should probably go back and just change that on the agenda, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Now that we've already approved it. Don't tell anybody.
Amendment.
And then we have one, two, three.
Four.
Four. It does not represent a quorum, nor can we pass, can we approve these tonight? So about a motion to table these until the next meeting. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If none, there should be, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Moving right along, Mr. Sullivan, welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I have a confession before you start.
Yes.
I made a little mistake the last time. I was supposed to notify you that you were on the agenda for the last meeting.
No, I'm, well, I should have checked in.
No, don't worry about it. It was, it was okay.
It was okay.
You're forgiven.
It's a busy, it's a busy time of the year anyway. So, yes, and I have, aside from that, another one. I had, according to our, the process we had discussed, my first meeting to, I was intending to get you things like what I just handed out today, like several days in advance of the meeting, instead of handing them out at the meeting. So hopefully I can go over them so that they're understandable and we can, we can discuss them, okay, all right, today. But the idea is that our next meeting, perhaps next month, based on any comments you have today, I will have redrafted, well, I could say Sections 1 through 3, but it's mostly Sections 3 because Sections 1 and 2 are only about five lines long altogether. And then have, get those to you along with some notes like this for Section 4, so that we can discuss Section 4 at the next meeting. So that's the plan.
Right up our alley. Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, a number of the, what I've done is I've taken a deeper dive into a lot of these things that I had talked about with you guys at the, at the first meeting, kind of a very high level. So there's some more detailed comments in your notes here as well as some draft language on some, some changes. So I'll just go through it slowly and you guys can stop me with any questions or, and I certainly recognize you haven't had a chance to read it. So, you know, you can go over it and then you can bring it home with you and we can talk about it in more detail.
I will say that we have an expert on our commission on TDRs, Megan Randall.
Yeah, we just discussed those. So I do want to talk about that, about that, given that that's in Section 3.
We're gonna have Fred take a question from Fred.
Fred, you have one of these?
Wait, wait one second.
There's a song.
Yep.
Yeah.
Made plenty. Made plenty. It's good reading. Although it's a little bit wonky zoning stuff tonight.
It's a turd meeting, is what it is.
I'm sure this will be good on TV.
It's easy to read physics, though.
So the, the good news is I didn't find anything to change in Section 1, which is the title. The bylaw shall be known as the Pownell zoning bylaw. I thought that was solid.
Yeah, that was pretty good. That was well thought out. Yeah.
Section 2, though, I, I mean, I didn't, you know, it is what it is. It's, it's an okay purpose section for the whole bylaw, but it kinda, it, to me, it, it didn't really talk about economic prosperity upfront, which was kind of the main point of this, this revision. And it went on to like the last couple of lines was all about, you know, eliminating land uses and things, which I thought was a little bit, I don't, maybe a little negative tone and a little bit kind of like incidental. It's like dealing with non-conforming uses in the purpose section, and that seemed a little bit unnecessary. So I just shortened it down to the sentence you see there. The purpose of this bylaw is to encourage the appropriate development. It should be of the town of Pownell, saying a little rush, in a manner that will promote economic prosperity, protect important resources, and contribute to a high quality of life for residents. Yeah. You know?
Oh, I got it.
Feel free to, to mess about with that, but.
I thought about that, in that section minimization and future elimination of such land development problems as may presently exist. So.
The shorter the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we're talking about appropriate development and high quality of life.
Barbara, what'd you say?
I said, the shorter the better.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's probably ever going to weigh heavily on a court case or anything in Pownell, what the purpose says, but I, I think it puts in a little different light. So the only, the only notes I have here, on the left, you can see in Section 3, I've indicated the, the section numbers. Those are the section numbers where I found things where I thought that there might be some appropriate changes. So I didn't, I didn't replicate all the ones where I didn't think there needed to be a change. So I didn't have anything else on the first page. Went down to the second page and Section 3.4. So there's, there's a, there's a, a number of things in the bylaw that reflect things that are in state statute. And the section on existing small lots is one of them. So it's okay, really, the way that it is now. With the only, the only thought I would have is, is we talked about adding a provision for waivers. So at the, in the last sentence, I would put in a variance or waiver is required.
So, question.
Yep.
So, and I think you started by saying it's an existing state statute that covers the small lot.
Yeah, that, that language, as you see there, is, is really taken from statute. So you, it basically says that the town, you have to allow for the development of existing lots, even if they're smaller than the minimum lot size, provided.
If it existed prior to the laws.
Right, 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 exactly. Provided they're at least an eighth of an acre in size and, and at least have width, minimum width or depth dimension of at least 40 feet. So that's, that has been in statute and it's still in statute.
So is this the statute, the, the whole thing, after your, your italics where you say add or weight?
So in my little note sheet there, so, so that, that was added to the statute probably since this was first drafted.
Oh, amended, okay, it's the amendment, okay.
So, so now, you don't have to have this block of text in there that I, I put on my notes, but you can. So this is, this is a part that where you, we used to put like you had an existing small lot and it was purchased by the owner of a contiguous lot. They could, generally would be automatically merged, right? So this, this, all this does is set out some conditions under which they don't necessarily have to be merged. So that small lot, even under common ownership, could retain its status as a buildable lot if those criteria are met that are indicated there, 1 through 4. And that is, that is basically taken straight from statute. It's, it's not a mandatory provision, but it's, it's something you can include.
So are, are you suggesting that we include it or we just reference the statute?
If you were going to include it, I would suggest you put it right in your bylaw because people don't tend to, they might have a hard time finding it in statute.
Do the references, yeah, okay.
So, so I mean, it, it basically says, you know, if, if this existing small lot is, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming, and it has, you know, a water supply, wastewater disposal system, then, you know, then it doesn't have to be merged, which makes sense, I guess, because there's a certain level of development that's already happened there. So.
Okay. Makes sense.
Well, how often does this, does a case like this arise?
Why, I think they're on out.
Who's taking it to the DRB wants to inherit something?
Yeah.
If you went away and there's a couple of lots right here, I think.
Yeah, we talked about one at the DRB at our, the last meeting I attended.
They abandoned the property for some time, but there's young children, I know, if someday they want to go in, they live, they grew up there.
Up there, yeah.
But it's been abandoned for quite a while.
There's a lot of property.
So what are you saying, more or less, somebody could go in there, go to the DRB, show that they have the water, wastewater treatment and.
Yeah, there's a lot of property in town that would fall under that potentially. So, yeah.
Okay.
There's some, there's some towns where it's a real issue. Yeah, there's, there's, you know, like Woodford, I'm working Woodford, just finishing, they have a lot, a lot of pre-existing small lots.
Little, little small lots around the lake.
And the neighbors, neighbors don't always like what they're doing on those pre-existing small lots.
That's tricky up there. Okay.
Okay, so we can.
God, we don't have a lake.
Yeah.
It'd be terrible.
So the, the next, so everything else is, is okay. You know, then there's this, I have a general note under 3.7 and onward. And I, I talked about it before, and it's something that we will get into in a lot more detail later. But in the, the district, this kind of sets forward, you know, that there's going to be these zoning, that there's these zoning districts, and the zoning districts are, are fine. But then it talks, you know, it talks a little bit about, uh, different, you know, permitted conditional accessory uses, and then it goes into the, um, matrix of uses and all that. And, uh, let's see, I'm trying to make sure that I don't get ahead of myself. So anyway, this just kind of like, I, I said, when we're getting into the districts, I said, let's, I think it makes sense to try to distill down the, the number of land uses that we're talking about because the, the, currently, there's like hundreds, hundreds of land uses. And it's generally, we're trying more to get kind of away from, you know, saying whether, you know, that you should differentiate between like a flower shop and a bake shop or something like that, and deal more with kind of the, the development and the, the appearance of the, the site and things like that.
Get away from our grid.
Yeah, and, and so, so it's more of this notion of form-based design stuff. Well, certainly there's, there's, and also to try to get back away a little bit from making so many things conditional uses. This conditional use has these really vague criteria in the, in the statute that, you know, they, they can be approved as long as they don't have adverse impact on the character of the area and stuff like that.
Yeah, they're like three criteria.
No one really knows quite what that means. Yeah, there's like five of them. And, and so, you know, there's some things where you probably still want to have that, but there's a lot of things where I think that you just want to make them permitted uses, and they're permitted and can happen as long as, you know, they meet the, the standards of, of the district for dimensional standards and they, they have a good site plan.
Right.
So, so the idea is, is maybe to, to be maybe a little bit more prescriptive on the site plan requirements, but developers would know as long as they meet those requirements about, you know, placement of the building and parking and things like that, there isn't any question but that.
They wind up with fewer conditions that need to be reviewed periodically.
Yeah, fewer, fewer conditions and, and more certainty that, you know, that what they're proposing can be, you know, permitted.
So from a developer's point of view, that kind of eases their pathway and they don't do.
I think Dollar General probably is a good example here in Pownell, where a lot of people thought maybe they'd conform to something different, but really, what's the village like? I mean, who would be your architect? Pat Gray? You know, I mean.
Right.
So maybe it's not a bad deal there, where it belongs, but somewhere else, you know, it's, they took over a place that's actually a mess.
If we were applying form-based standards, then they probably would have had virtually no problem at all. Not that they had much of a problem anyway.
Probably. I mean, you might, you know, the Dollar, the case of the Dollar General in particular, I mean, they wanted to put a building in Pownell, you know, they want a, a business here. So, I mean, you, you know, and that's, I'm, I'm sure it was a welcome addition, was it having a general merchandise store in town. But, you know, you, you certainly could have, if the, if you had had those standards, you could have required a little bit different building placement on the lot, for example, and a little bit maybe different facade for the building.
A facade, yeah.
You know, so nothing that Dollar General would have bought that, but it was something that would have made it a little bit more appealing.
But it would have been a nice guide for us to have that at that time.
Yeah, and it would have probably simplified the, the site plan review.
Sure.
Like the, the Dollar General in Bennington is marginally better looking and.
Mar, there you go. That's how I would describe it.
It's still on, 10 minutes.
It's one in Arlington. There's one in Williamstown, and they're all look different.
Yeah.
But they took over existing buildings.
Uh-huh, yeah, in some places.
Yeah, like, you know, the, the one in, I don't, we have a Dollar General discussion, but you know, like the, the one in, the one in Bennington, you know, Bennington's talking about doing the same kind of thing because they said, yeah, we, we kind of got what we asked for, but we could have asked for something a little bit better or different. They, you know, they, they have this, you know, kind of a semi sort of second floor appearance, and then they've got all those fake windows and things. So, you know, Bennington's talking about having, you know, actual transparent windows and things like that, you know. But you see the same thing, the same thing with the Dollar General up in Arlington. You know, Arlington, you know, had them, you know, orient the building a certain way, but, and, and, you know, put a pitched roof on it, you know, gables and everything, but still has some of those weird architectural features that work for, for a retailer, but not so much for a, you know, a pleasant street game.
I think the Stewart's in Manchester, I think that had a lot of similar.
Yeah, that was, that was in a.
I was surprised that even went in.
That was in a, yeah, they really, that was an expensive lot, but they, that's part of a design control district, so that was more, more rigorous yet, you know. We're not talking about doing anything like that, I don't think, anyway, here.
So, could you explain for everyone the real difference between form-based standards and adhering to a grid that tries to lay out every little detail of what you can and can't do in a different district?
Sure, yeah. Well, there's, you know, we, I, I like to use the terms in most of our towns as form-based standards. If you get into the, you know, the, the real, uh, planning practitioner world, you hear a lot about, uh, form-based code, where basically, you know, you take your zoning bylaw and toss it out and develop a whole new land use code based on this, this new philosophy of development that's pretty difficult to develop. They, like they say, usually, you know, you wouldn't pay the Regional Planning Commission $10,000. You would pay a private, team of private consultants with architects and, and land use planners, you know, over $100,000 even for the town of Pownell to do it. But the idea is you kind of create these, for what we're not doing, create these transect lines, you know, radiating out from the center, and along the transect lines, there's different categories or levels of, 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 types of development, char, character of development. And for, along, for each one of those areas, you specify really specific, rigorously defined design standards, basically, or, you know, like what the buildings have to look like, where they have to be located on the lot, the types of site features and amenities that they have to include. And it, it's so prescriptive that, but, but they, they de-emphasize the use, you know, the use is, is relatively unimportant.
It's the appearance.
As long as they meet those other standards.
It's the appearance, but, but it's, it's to the point where in a, in perfect form-based code world, you know, you don't even need a development review board. You just, you know, the zoning administrator can take a look and it says, check, 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 you meet all the standards. The idea being that you're doing all of your, you know, development review as you're developing the, the bylaw. That's, like I said, is really complex to develop and, you know, it puts a lot of burden on, you know, an administrator too.
More appropriate for larger towns.
I think so, you know. So, so our idea is like, kind of like, it's, it's not a bad idea to, to, to try to, you know, even, you know, to try to not differentiate between, you know, 300 different kinds of uses, but say, okay, you've got a village district. And instead of listing, you know, 90 or 100 uses in different categories, just say, maybe we get back to the, the categories, you know, like have, you know, retail is permitted and, and, you know, one, two-family and multifamily residential and restaurants and lodging establishments and light manufacturing, something like that, rather than, you know, that's it. And have lots of potential uses within those. And, and put the focus on, like I said, Louis said, instead of form-based code, form-based standards. So, and, and you already have form-based stand, standards in a way in your bylaw. They're, they're really the dimensional requirements, but maybe they're like refined dimensional requirements. You really kind of think through, what, what is the town really want, like in the village district or the commercial district for placement of buildings on a lot? You know, is it important in the village that you have it placed, the building closer to the road and the parking on the side and the rear? You know, you know, is, is the, the window treatment important, things like that. So, so, you know, you, you kind of like, you have setback requirements, maybe you have building height requirements. Sometimes in these form-based standards, we're so used in our typical dimensional standards, having like a minimum, minimum setbacks and maximum heights and things like that. Sometimes in form-based, you have like maximum setbacks, you know, so you don't want the building to be too far back from the, from the road and have a big parking lot in front of it, say. So you have a maximum, it can't be more than 20.
Or minimum heights. That's where all your two-story stuff goes or three.
Or, or you have like, yeah, like a minimum height standard. You know, I don't know if it works or makes sense in, in, in Pownell.
Right, in Pownell.
But, but in, in some towns, in some towns, you know, like Manchester just did that kind of thing, and they have a minimum height, two-story building in the, in the downtown and, and the surrounding commercial area. So, so all, all it is, is really just kind of trying to think through those dimensional standards and create the form that, that you really want in those areas without getting quite so hung up on what, what the specific uses are.
So can we do away with the grid somehow?
I'm, I'm enthusiastic about doing that because I've never been able to read through it without getting lost. It's so, it's so, what I was suggesting in this is, is that if we distill down the uses for each district, we just like, put those right in the district. These are the things that are allowed in the village district.
Yeah.
You know, this line. And then it's, you can still have that matrix, but hopefully it's a lot shorter and maybe we put it in an appendix.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, just by virtual listing the things that are not permitted in those areas. I mean, if it's not one of the things that we want to see in there.
It's not permitted.
Then it's not permitted. You know, we don't have to spell that out.
Right, right, yeah.
The 80th page of the grid.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, if it's not listed there, then it's.
Well, and I say this as somebody who's on the DRB too. It's extremely cumbersome to be going through that thing and trying to figure that out because something in there always trips you up. There's always some little condition or something in there that you didn't expect. So, all right, thanks for clearing that up.
I also, I just did a, I did a, I don't, I don't think a major rewrite, but just kind of revised the language in 3.7.1, establishment of zoning districts, just again, to try to make it a little bit less cumbersome and, and rambling. And, and then I just cleaned up the, the table of zoning districts a little bit. And I, I noted, just as a note, at the bottom of the table, because later on, not yet, but I had suggested, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of overlay districts in general. They confuse people. And I really didn't see any reason that you needed to have a separate wetland overlay district. That was confusing. I mean, wetland regulations aren't bad, but they're not town regulations, really. They're state regulations. So I think if you, I, I had a resource map and maybe put it in the conservation map that showed wetlands in general anyway, and just noted that the state is responsible for those, then we could get away, we could get rid of the wetland overlay district. And, you know, that's a problem too, because the state, as, as I, as I can attest from my own recent work in Pownell, that recreation trail down by the wastewater treatment plant, doesn't matter if it's on a wetlands map or not. If they think there might be a wetland there.
You're not going in.
They're gonna jump in and cut us.
One cat tail.
Raise the issue, I would say. So, and it doesn't even have to be a cat tail. It can just be the, it can be the, the soil type or something. So, you know, it's, putting it on a map doesn't really mean anything because, you know, they, they'll do a site inspection.
Yep.
So, so anyway, that was just a, that's a little note on that. So, on the, the zoning map, so there's, the, the bylaw currently has reference to specific dates on the zoning map and for the flood hazard map. And, you know, I just suggested, just saying, you know, if you put dates on there, you know, you know, those get, those get updated, and if you don't update the dates, then there's going to be confusion about what the official map is. So I just say, attach the map to the zoning bylaw. It's all part of the same deal, without referencing dates. And.
Right, and when the, when you, if the map needs updating, you just update it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the, and, and it has a separate references to the flood hazard map and on a water resources map. And I just said, you know, put the flood hazard, because that's, that is a significant, that's a, that's a zoning thing. And so that really should be on the zoning. And so that really should be on the zoning map.
Sure.
So, um, I mean, you might have, you might have, like you do now, you've got several zoning maps that show areas in more detail and you might still have that, but I just said, you probably should show at least one of those townwide map, show the flood hazard map. Um, okay.
I don't even know, did we have a flood hazard committee plan then? We did these?
Well.
I, I, you know, we must have had something, right?
Well, you have like a, you know, uh, the FEMA approved, um, flood hazard map and flood hazard regulations. There's a, a question about whether or not your flood hazard regulations need to be updated to reflect the current FEMA standards.
Okay.
So we can get to that when we get to flood hazard. Um, then, then, uh, three point seven point four, um, again, I just kind of cleaned up the language a little bit for land underwater, it basically says that, you know, if there's, you know, the land under water bodies is included as part of the district and I changed, I swapped out the word swamp for wetlands, because I'm gonna use these, what, swamps.
More in Louisiana.
Sounds kind of dismal.
Dismal, very good. Um, now, a, a more consequential change perhaps is, uh, three point seven point five, interpretation of the map, is your, your current bylaw, as you see, says that if there's uncertain guess of location of a district boundary line, it should be resolved by the planning commission in a manner consistent with the town plan. And I was like, I think for, you know, if you're gonna be like amending the, the zoning bylaw like you're doing now and there's questions about where a zoning district boundary is, that's a good role for the planning commission. But if somebody's coming in with an application for a permit and, you know, you're not sure where the boundary is and how it affects his, his application, that's really not a planning commission function. That's more of a zoning administrator function, and if somebody doesn't like what the zoning administrator says, they can appeal it to the development review board. Um, I mean, if those things come up, they should let you guys know so that you could take a look and try to clarify the map if there's confusion, but, um, and I, I took on that, I forgot to number the pages on my notes, my notes are so long, but that section, uh, that, it, it goes after the italics part that talks about interpretation of the zoning map. So I, I just, I took that from, uh, Shaftesbury's where they, um, leave those determinations to the zoning administrator and the DRB, and those are just kind of criteria that they consider when trying to figure out where the zoning boundary actually is.
I mean, I forget how we've literally handled them before, um, because it's come up. It's come up sometimes when there's not, um, a survey done. So I, yeah, I, okay, now I know what you mean, a survey would have to match up to the map, and if it doesn't, part of this could be in a different zone or, all right.
Yeah, like you're just, like, somebody comes in, they got a lot and want to develop this lot, and you look at the zoning map and it's like, well, maybe the boundary line's here, or maybe it's over here. You know, that ideally, you know, with the, the GIS maps are good enough where you overlay them on the parcels and you can zoom in and really see clearly. But if there's a question, then, you know, who should make that call?
I like that, that's good.
So, so this would be a change to the bylaws or something?
If I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
If there's a question and the question is, where should the boundary be between our various districts? That's the planning commission.
Hmm.
If that boundary is already established and the decision is whether this individual person's land in relationship to the boundary, that's the zoning administrator.
Right, right, yeah, exactly, and, and, and I, you know, I think that, you know, that, that, the zoning district boundaries are set, they are real.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's just that there's a, can be a question, so.
Something within the, sometimes.
So, um, yeah, so the map is the official zoning district boundary, but if you can't figure it out, hopefully, hopefully, there's enough guidance so the zoning administrator can usually get those things resolved.
Survey a good engineer.
Yeah. Um, so three, three point eight, um, one, two, three. Um, that, that's kind of what we talked about earlier, about the different categories of uses and the land use matrix and, um, possibly narrowing those down. And also, um, you know, we'll talk about this in a lot more detail as we get to the specific districts, but, uh, you know, talk about maybe moving some of the, the conditional uses to permitted uses to add clarity. And, you know, people sometimes get really nervous about that because they say, oh, you know, conditional use, then, you know, we can kind of decide if we like it or if we don't like it, you know? And, and for some, for some uses, that, that does still make sense. If there's a use that has, you know, potentially a lot of impact, you know, say generates a lot of, you know, potentially a lot of noise or, or odor or something like that. Um, but remember too, that permitted uses other than one and two-family dwellings and things that are considered by right to be a single-family use of property, like certain kinds of home occupations and in-home daycare and things like that. Other than those things, all those permitted uses still have to go to the development review board, still have to have a site plan review done, and the development review board can still impose conditions to ensure that it's a good site plan. So it's not like you're saying, it's permitted and, you know, we're not having any further review, so.
Right, we're going through this now with the motel changing over to a rooming house.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's a big issue everywhere, yeah.
Big issues, yeah, so we're into, we're into everything here.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Yeah, it's quite a cross-selling going on here, Paul.
Yeah, no, that's, um, I'd be interested to see what you guys come up with, because every, I think every town in Vermont almost is dealing with that, that roadside motel.
No question.
Issue and what's going to become of them, kind of a thing.
Alatko Lanning told me a story about all that, they've been doing that, motels up here for forty years.
Yeah.
Very few left.
We however have to be careful about speaking about it, so.
I know, but I, you know, things are going on here.
They're going on.
Television.
We can speak about that.
No, but I mean, it's going on everywhere.
No, it's, it's, it's an issue because, I mean, you know, a, a lot of those roadside motels, they, they just are proving to not be economically viable in their previous use. And so understandably, the owners are trying to adapt and, and figure out how to, you know, derive some revenue from them so they can pay their taxes.
Taxpayers, right.
So, so the question is, yeah, the rooming house or some kind of, some kind of itinerant lodging.
Give some cash flow.
Yeah, um.
So everything that we currently have listed as conditional, we should review.
Yeah, I think.
And if we can eliminate it because it just falls under that criteria of, um, daycare or something like that, clean it up, get it out.
Yeah, it's just kind of like, just kind of raising the issue now as we get into the districts and kind of talk about which uses we're going to allow in, in which district. Um, you know, say, let's, you know, let's, let's not necessarily just take everything that's in the table as a conditional use and bring it over as a conditional use, and say, well, maybe we don't need to have quite so many.
I agree, hasn't been reviewed in a long time, so.
But, you know, that's just kind of raising that flag.
Yeah.
And, and then I, I kind of cleared up that whole concern about permitted uses a little bit, um, in suggested language at the bottom of that page under three point eight three. Uh, again, I think I don't, I didn't really change the intent of that, I ju- of what's in the current bylaw, I just cleared it up a little bit. Permitted uses or land uses considered compatible with the subject district, provided that specific lot building and site standards are satisfied. And a single-family and two-family dwellings uses accessory to those residential uses and other uses specifically designated in this bylaw are permitted uses that are reviewed and acted upon directly by the zoning administrator while all other permitted uses are subject to site plan review procedures. So, I don't know, maybe that's not perfect wording, but just tries to, I think, explain.
It's better, it does.
Okay, now, um, our TDR expert can take over.
Yeah, okay, Megan.
After that, I will give a physics lecture.
That's right.
String theory.
Oh, I like that. I read a lot of books about string theory, but I still don't, I have, yeah, I, I understand about a third of it.
That's really a lot.
I'm impressed.
But it is interesting, as you state in here, that your understanding is it's never been used, and I've done this for fourteen years, I've never seen it used, so never seen one right transferred to a different property or a bank or anything else.
I almost be concerned if it were used, frankly, because then it creates a record-keeping nightmare for somebody.
When you say there are other ways of accomplishing the goal, yeah, right, and it would lead to disaster here. When you say there are other ways of accomplishing that goal, could you give an example?
Sure, so what's the goal, I guess, to start with? So, so, you know, transfer, transfer of development rights is this, um, I, I think it's this, um, concept that came out of kind of melding, uh, economics and land use planning.
Right.
Because trying to find the most, you know, efficient way to accomplish a land use goal, you know, from a market, economic market perspective. So it's like, let's let the free market, uh, do this, right? And, um, as I say, it has not ever been used very much anywhere, and people have tried it in different places. But the idea is that, okay, the, uh, towns generally want, you know, to meet, you know, Vermont planning goals and, and all to concentrate, um, higher density, mixed-use development in and around set, historic centers of development, like vill- village centers. So your village areas and your commercial areas and your, your mixed-use residential, your RR1 area, right? And you want to protect more open space or keep, you know, more of the rural lands, more rural and available for agriculture and open space uses and things like that. So this idea was, if somebody owns a, uh, you know, a, a farm, say, out in the rural area, and, you know, they, they would like to, um, recoup some of the inherent value of that, um, through development, but they don't, but, you know, it is a preference to not have.
The town frowns upon it.
Not have a big sprawling subdivision over the farmland so that the, the, that farmer could, in theory anyway, say, say there was, you know, he could develop forty building lots on his farm. He could instead take a number of those development rights and basically sell them to somebody in a receiving zone, kind of like the village center or the RR1 zone or something like that. And so he would get money for his land without it being developed and somebody in the receiving zone could develop those thirty or forty housing units or whatever in an area that's more economically efficient and desirable for the, the town to have, you know, to support that village-style development. So it's a kind of a cool market-based idea that, um, never really gets used.
Well, you know, really, I've watched over the years, Saratoga Springs does it well.
Yeah.
They keep their open space, they've got their historical places, somebody want to put in a golf course there, and then somebody want to put housing on a golf course, so over the last thirty, forty years, I think they, they use space and economics together.
You think they're using actual trans- transfer of development rates?
Maybe, I have to, I mean, like Saratoga Springs is, is like, if you go over there and walk around, and I've been, you know, looking at Saratoga for thirty or forty years too, and I, from where it was pretty rundown.
Right.
You know.
A la Manchester back thirty years ago.
Yeah, and now you go over there, I say like, yeah, you could go over there and kind of point to all the different developments and say, yeah, that was taken right out of a planning and zoning textbook. I mean, they really are doing a lot of, you know, kind of cutting-edge zoning stuff over there. Whether they've used TDRs or not, I don't know, but their mixed-use development and all their solar orientation and their, you know, their, I mean, they've, they've kind of done it all. It helps that they were, kind of hit a thr- hit a threshold where there's been a lot of demand and a lot of investment, private investment that lets.
Now with the new chip factory and.
Yeah, there's, now there's a huge shop market over there.
It's cranking up over there now.
Yeah, but anyway, so, so like, so like this idea of TDR, it's like, it's like, you know, the, the academics all really like, wow, this is, this is the thing, but it just never really caught on and, and, and one of the, I think, you know, one of the, one of the, the concerns I always had about it was, let's say that that transfer of development happened. And like, who keeps track of that? Sure, right, everybody remembers it for a few years, but after ten or fifteen or twenty years, who remembers, who remembers that that farm?
That's right.
Who bought the, who bought the racetrack when it was a farm?
I mean, it's supposed to all be recorded in the, you know, in the deeds and everything like that, you know, that those development rights have been moved, but, you know, in the meantime, the zoning standards may have changed and it's like, ah, you know, so.
It's kind of opened a can of worms ten years down the road, if they can find it.
Pretty complicated, but, but I, I say is like, you know, there, there are other ways to do it, it's like, you know, well, you know, the idea is like, well, you know, there, there are ways to conserve, and people do conserve, you know, open land in other ways, you know, working with, you know, people buy, you know, the land trust buys development rights and retires the development rights or holds them basically to conserve the land.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's, um, even, even the use value program, you know, reduces the property tax burden for open space. So there's, you know, there's different programs and incentives that can work to conserve.
Sure.
Open land, and on the other side, in the, in the village development, you know, I think, you know, especially, um, you know, when you have, you know, sewer infrastructure, you have potential for accommodating fairly high, um, development densities and mixed uses, and so, you know, just allow, allow it, you know?
Right.
I mean, have, have appropriate form-based standards so that it's, you know, if, if somebody does, you know, a twelve-unit, high-density, mixed-use development on an acre of land in the village, that, you know, that it's done tastefully.
Right, exactly.
But, but, you know, you know, allow it to happen. If that, if that's what you want, just let it happen by right.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it, it removes complication. Now, you could, you know, you could keep the TDR thing in your bylaw and it probably doesn't do any harm because probably another twenty years, you could be sitting around this table or somebody else would be sitting around this table and saying, well, that's never been used, you know? But I like, if it's not, if it's not doing anything, why clutter up the, the bylaws?
Especially as it's very hard to understand.
If somehow we find ourselves with an imminent need for it, we can always amend the bylaws to put it back in, right?
Yeah, save the word.
Yeah, the only place that I really remember it being used much in New England, um, and it was all, and I remember it because it was always whenever I went to a planning conference, it was, they always were highlighting it for a while. It was in, in Wells, Maine, they all had been to Wells, you know? And there were a lot of, um, areas that they wanted to conserve, especially like, you know, areas around the marshes and things like that.
Sure.
And so they wanted to transfer all the development rights to the downtown area. When I first went through Wells, I remember I did a bike trip up to the coast once in the seventies, right? And there was, there was like a Howard Johnson's and a campground and, and a.
There was it.
Maybe a gas station.
A little different now.
Yeah, so, so I guess that they accomplished something by transferring all those development rights. I'm not sure if it, I don't think it was quite accompanied with, uh, form-based standards that maybe they could have.
That may have come later, some of the grandfather before.
But that, that was a place where they said that they used the TDRs, but other than that.
Said that well.
Well, he owned most of the land there, right?
I, it prob- maybe that makes it easier too, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's one, you guys, you know, you don't have to, but, you know, if, if you, uh, if you want, it's an easy one to take that out. Um, now the, the next section, this was another, this, this was another favorite of mine, so. So, cluster, cluster subdivision, or cluster sub, so, this was, this was, really gained a lot of popularity. You know, also about thirty, twenty-five, thirty years ago and, and, you know, the Center for Rural Massachusetts did a lot of work on cluster subdivisions. And, and basi- basically, they were, and it was in state statute too, so a lot of, a lot of towns in our area had cluster subdivision provisions. And all that basically said was, you could take an area where you're gonna do a subdivision and reduce the lot sizes for the individual units, provided that you conserved the rest of the land as open space. So, you know, it, you couldn't, and, and if you did that, sometimes you'd get a density bonus too. So if, you know, if you had a piece of land that you could divide into like ten two-acre lots, you know, instead, you could divide it into maybe like eleven one-acre lots, you know, and conserve the nine acres as open space. So you're conserving some rural open space, which is, you know, it's a good idea, but it, it's another one of those things that also, you know, to be done well, it really helps to, you know, not just have like nine acres that nobody can see or use be the open space, but to really be thoughtful about where the houses are located and the, and the open spaces located. And I don't know if that's been used much in, in Powell, it has been used in some of our towns and, and, in some subdivisions.
Wetlands is a problem.
Yeah, I mean, that can be an issue, it's always an issue, it's like, what do you allow to be included as part of the conserved open space? Do you allow land that would be conserved open space anyway because you can't develop it to be part of it?
I don't know how much it's been used, it really hasn't been.
Probably not, probably not much, but
I can imagine.
But they, a few years ago, they, they had, well, the, the state statutes gone through a couple of, of changes over time and, and they had created this, they, they started calling it planned residential development, which basically meant the same thing as cluster subdivision. And then they had planned unit development too, which is the same idea, but allows for mixed use or commercial uses as well. And then they got rid of the planned residential development part out of the statute altogether. So the only thing left in the enabling legislation anymore is planned unit development. But it says in the, in the so-called PUD, Planned Unit Development Section of the statute, you know, you can have a PUD that only allows residential uses, it's not like you have to allow mixed uses or commercial uses. So, you know, just to be consistent with the statute, I was suggesting that you change this section to planned unit development.
Sure.
And then I was like, well, you know, allow, allow this, basically all it does is, you know, allows that flexibility to change the lot sizes and all that. But to, to also, to basically open it up to any uses that are allowed in the district that the PUD is located. So if the PUD is located in a district that allows for commercial use, then a commercial use could be part of the PUD. If it's in a district like, you know, rural residential two, where it's primarily just residential, then it would be
Should remain.
A residential subdivision. But it, you know, it, it basically, you know, you, you can see like, you know, and it doesn't have to be like a subdivision even, you know? It could be, it could be like a condominium-type development too, if you will, you know, so you could still have one lot, but maybe you wanna have like, like a multi-family building instead of, you know, a bunch of individual lots if it's allowed in that district and, and, you know, maybe you have like a, a little allowance for some, you know, whatever type of commercial use that's allowed in the district on the same lot. So, it could be subdivided or it could just be a lot. And so, I, I borrowed some, some language both from the statute and from a couple of other zoning bylaws that talked about the purpose and then how you review a PUD and then the standards for planned unit development. You know, again, try not to, try not to mess up what's in your current one, but try to make it consistent with statute.
Right.
And also incorporate this notion that if, if it's in a district where mixed uses are allowed, then you could have a mixed-use PUD.
PUD.
And again, I don't know if anybody will ever use it, but it's not terribly complicated and it's, it's pers- yeah, in, in a dynamic development environment, which maybe Powell will be soon, I don't know. You know, the, the, it's, it's appreciated by developers because they, they like the flexibility. Basically, they would come into the Development Review Board and say, you know, I know these are your, your, your standards for this, this district, but we'd like to develop this property in a different way. We won't, you know, change the overall density, that has to stay the same. But we'd like to concentrate all the residential development in this block down in this corner where it makes sense and then have some commercial development here or mix the two together and conserve, you know, the open land or whatever. So it, it just basically has them come into the DRB, explain what they wanna do, how their proposal, you know, meets the objectives of the PUD, which are outlined here, and the town plan. And then it's up to the Development Review Board to decide the extent to which they allow the flexibility and the, and the standards.
Should simplify it, both for the town and for the developer as well.
Hopefully, I mean, really, the idea is, you know, making it more flexible, so you, you're not so rigidly tied into, to something. But you're still, you know, you're still kind of like, you can't do uses that aren't allowed in the district, you know? And you can't increase the density beyond what's allowed in the district.
Not all stands.
But you can change how things are oriented on the property.
Right.
So, that's, that's what I tried to do there and you can read through the, the language and see if you see some holes. And if you do, please flag them. We can, we can fix it.
We'd love to test somebody, I wish somebody would come and try it.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
Please.
So now, now we get, now we get into more exciting state law changes, just to cause more anxiety. So, three point one-two is wind energy facilities and that's one in the next section, then, commercial telecommunication towers. Yeah, a number of years ago, you know, as these things started coming in, a lot of people put a lot of time into create crafting land use regulations, you know, zoning standards to deal with wind energy facilities and, and telecommunication towers. And then the, the state came along and said, you can't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, basically, state statute now says that any, you know, any renew, any energy facility that is subject to review by the Public Utility Commission under section two forty-eight, it has to get a certificate of public good, you can't regulate it under zoning at the local level. Now, you still have input in their state proceedings, using your town plan and you just adopted a new town plan with an enhanced energy section that has some guidelines and standards for these things.
That was quite a story today, uh, in the, about the Apple Hill.
About the Apple Hill and
Development, yeah.
Yeah, I had to call somebody because I, I read it and I was like, wait a minute, didn't they already make this decision a few years ago?
They, they granted the basic, uh, public good permit, right? A couple of years ago.
Well, yeah, I mean, it goes back before that though, because if I, if I, if I remember it all right, that before they ever got to that, that it was, there was a court case that was decided in favor of the developers that let them treat those two adjacent projects as two separate projects. That was years ago.
And the lawsuit was that, no, they exceeded the two point four.
Well, they were, it is funny because they went ahead with those two projects, Chelsea and Apple Hill as separate projects. They were reviewed, ran into all the appeals and everything at the, the town level. BRCRC even got sued for some reason I still can't quite understand. And, and, and then, and then, to try to resolve the case with the town, the developers redesigned the project and came to an agreement with the town and then resubmitted to the Public Utility Commission and the Public Utility Commission rejected Chelsea, going all the way back to those initial grounds saying, they're, actually, because of the way you changed the project, they're not two separate projects anymore. So it doesn't meet our, our standards.
But that was it. And the things, if I, if I may, the things that's pertinent to this that they did reject was, on the June twelfth decision, the PUC also rejected some of the arguments of the project intervenors who opposed the project, including the Apple Hill homeowners. These arguments include that the views in and around the town are a significant economic asset that will be diminished by the Chelsea project. And by that, the PUC also stated, the photos of views presented by these, by these groups during the permitting process do not persuade us. How'd you like to have special deference or be applying for special deference and get those words? They are not persuading us on the undue adverse impact on aesthetics. The PUC decision also rejected the intervenor's argument that the Bennington Town Plan restricts solar development in the rural conservation district where the project site is located. We found that the town did not treat the conservation measures in the town plan as redistricting or restricting the development of solar projects like this one in the rural conservation. Does that mean, I know that's a rural conservation district or the town is claiming that, but does that mean that it should say that in there rather than strike it?
It's, well, one is, it should say, i- if you're concerned about it, it needs to say it in the town plan as opposed to zoning because they won't look at your zoning.
Which town plan was probably changed by the first application.
So, in, in that case though, and that, that is convoluted, believe me. But the, 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 note that, that, that the, the PUC, right, that's where we're at, rejected the interpretation of the plan that the Apple Hill Homeowners Association made, not the town's interpretation of the town plan.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The neighbors won.
The town had
No.
Had, had come to
An agreement with them already.
Come to an agreement with the developers that it was an acceptable project.
The town never asked for deference in this matter. Or, if, if they did and then they, the developer came back with conditions met and smaller.
Right, when, when it was first applied for, the town had their old town plan, they didn't have an enhanced energy section, they didn't have an Act one seventy-four plan. They still had a town plan that was rural.
Right.
But, but then they, they went back, you know, redesigned the project and came back and then through all the lawsuit and everything else, you know, they came to an agreement with the town and the town was like, you know, this is okay, meets the, meets the town plan, go ahead. So, so, you know, it's, it's a little bit misleading in there because I think everybody would look at that article and go, oh, what about the substantial deference of the town plan? But that was, that was a third party's interpretation. Might have been the right one, I don't know. But it was, it was a third-party interpretation, it wasn't the town's interpretation of their own town plan.
But it sounds to me like the only reason the PUC stopped this was because of the, they combined the two and it exceeded the mega wow limit for the state.
Right, and the Supreme Court had, like I said, had years ago, five, six years ago, said that they were separate projects.
But the interpretation of the town plans by the groups didn't fly.
It's, it's, I think it's hard, I think the bottom line is it's hard to take any lesson from that case.
Right, it is. Well, it is, and several other ones in Bennington too, and I've been asked several times, so tell us about this special deference and, you know, how, how do we get it? I said, the town applies for it.
Yeah, so if your, if your plan and is, is certified by the Regional Commission, probably at our September meeting.
Yes, I was gonna say it's gonna be, it'll be on, on the anniversary of the last one being certified.
Well, there you go, then, then, yeah, then you'll have this substantial deference at the, at two forty-eight.
My, my understanding is that we probably have a stronger position now, having adopted it on a local level, even though the BRCRC hasn't adopted it yet or confirmed it yet. In essence, it passed everything here.
Are you still, yeah.
According to one of your consultants anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Very nameless.
We learned a lot with biomass.
So did I.
Yeah.
Spent, I spent a lot, spent a lot of time.
Anyway, I don't mean to get us off, I just, when you started to say that maybe we should strike that section.
Well, I mean
I agree, it all, it all goes back to two forty-eight anyway.
There's kind of like, there's, there's no point really having it in your, in your zoning ordinance because you can't regulate any, you can't regulate anything that's, that's requires a certificate of public good. Now, there are some artifacts in the statute that talk about what you can regulate for wind turbines, but they really only apply to like, like an off-the-grid type system. Because as soon as it's grid-connected, it needs a two forty-eight. And as soon as it needs that, you can't regulate it.
So residential turbine probably.
But, you know, like I said, most residential turbines, certainly if I had one on my property, I would connect it to the grid, get my CPG.
Your extra one, yeah.
Cause it, cause financially, it makes a lot more sense. But if somebody, if somebody's just appears, wants to be off the grid, unconnected, then maybe, yeah, you could, they could do that.
Hilltop farm.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, there are, so if you wanna keep some regulations on wind turbines in your ordinance, then there is some of things that can apply to those off-the-grid turbines. And if you wanna do that, okay, we can certainly put those in. They have to do with like, you know, the, 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 the height.
Height, just from distance, not from the land, from the house now.
You didn't see
Disruptable levels have changed, there's a lot of changes in Montpelier and that.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't see any of that in here for the small off-the-grid ones?
Oh, there, there's a little, there's a little bit in there, but, but like I said, it's pretty, it's pretty limited what you can, you can cover, but there are some things.
Okay.
And it's mostly height. But if, if you wanna do that, we can absolutely stick that in.
Okay, so that's something we clearly need to have further discussion on as we go through.
So ensure, I'll, I'll, I'll give you those and you can decide what to do with them, so that the standards for off-grid turbines for review. So you can do that. Now, the same, now, three one-three deals, my notes, specifically in your bylaw talks about commercial telecommunication towers and antennas. Okay, so you're talking commercial, you're talking about something that would have to get a so-called two forty-eight A permit? And I, I, I copied the section of the statute there that also says that those shall be exempt from municipal approval under this chapter, i.e. zoning, when and to the extent jurisdiction is assumed by the Public Utility Commission, blah, 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 the exemption for obtaining approval under this chapter shall not affect the substantial deference to be given to a plan or recommendation based on a local land use bylaw. So, you know, so basically, that, that, that says the same thing, it says you, you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to, to regulate these commercial antenna under zoning. But you can have standards in your plan that will be reviewed by the Public Utility Commission.
But that, two forty-eight's been around a while and I think it preceded this two thousand and eleven version of our, of our bylaws. And if I recall, and this may be inaccurate, I think we attempted to put some restrictions on them hoping that a developer would come in and at least talk to us. Probably shouldn't do that, right? And, and that's happened, by the way. I mean, we get letters and we'll have solar people, we'll have, um, people of the tower. They came in at first, uh, the one that you were talking about. They didn't, they didn't wind up following through on what we had recommended, but, but still, you like to have, you know, at least approach the town and say, here's what we're gonna apply to the Public Utilities Commission for.
Ideally, they should do that. Now they, now they'll, um, you, you all should get a, you know, a, a notice for forty, forty-five days at least before they're gonna submit an application. And so you know what's going on.
Best of my knowledge, we do.
And you can ask for a meeting with the developer, like our, we came to our Regional Energy Committee meeting and we had five solar developments and we basically gave a run, took, you know, heard what they were all about. And, and, um, and then you can, you know, participate in the town can, in the, in the, uh, in the two forty-eight process. And so, you know, the developer, you know, I, I would think that if, you know, if they're gonna do a project in town and they know that you're concerned about it, they would come to you.
It would be who, then they come to us.
It's a horror story. I don't know. We, we had a beautiful setup here. It's gonna cost us about three quarters of a million dollars. We let these developers look at a landfill that we thought was closed properly, umpteen years ago, and guess what? It wasn't. It's a horror story.
I, 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 um, I know about that.
Yeah, yeah. So think total panels, make a road. Oh, this is nasty.
Yeah, the problem, I mean, just.
And then we had it for, you know, brownfields, we felt nice and safe there. There's a brownfield and, uh, you know, uh, gravel beds, nice and safe there.
Yeah. See, it's, it's one of those things where there's an, there's an incentive
Yeah, yeah.
For the, for the developers to find these, for so-called preferred sites that include old gravel pits and, and all, and all landfills. So they run around looking for those and they found, they found a landfill in, in Pownell. They found two, right? One that had been closed properly and one that wasn't. But they didn't really know that until they did their due diligence and, you know, through the brownfield program and discovered that, um, that one hadn't been. And so.
Hysterically, no paperwork on it.
So that's, so yeah, so that's unintended consequences.
Yeah.
So I understand why we should strike that. I mean, I, I tend to think that, that we were just trying to have some local control when we added that language in three thirteen on page fifteen here. Because it did get people to come in here and talk and discuss with us their projects, at least.
They all do.
I got the door open and flies are just.
Yeah, it's okay. You're getting them.
You know, I understand.
We can't turn on the air conditioner because it makes too much noise, so.
I think ma- you know, maybe the, yeah, maybe the thing to do is, you know, I would say you should take another look at your town plan because you just spent years doing that.
No, we just did the energy section.
But you know, it's kind of like, make sure that the provisions you want are in the plan. And, but even if it's not, right, I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be like, read like that in the plan. I mean, you're could be a, an intervenor or a party at those hearings anyway.
Whether you have it in a plan or by law or not.
I mean, you're a party. So, so.
But if by law was not gonna fly, so let's strike it. I, I say, I think ultimately, you know, we could just.
But you know, but yeah, by all means, you know, don't, you know, don't say, don't think that it means the town doesn't have a say. You certainly do. And, and you should, you know, you should, like, there was, um, like tel- a telecom case, like, um, there's a couple I could think of where the town's input was really important. Um, like there was one in Bennington where, uh, a, uh, a company wanted to put a really tall tower on top of Mount Anthony.
Oh, yeah.
There's two towers up there now, but they're very low profile, just above the trees. You can see them, but they're not. But this one would have been, you know, up there. And, and the town objected to that on aesthetic grounds and not, you know, yeah, maybe tied into general language in the town plan, but they just intervened in the proceeding and uh, the developer eventually, they saw it wasn't going where they wanted to go, so they, they pulled out that application, you know? There was another one in West Rupert, similar kind of thing where, you know, that, that proposal was for a facility that just would have been pretty shocking to the neighbors in West Rupert Village and the town, you know, was gonna be involved and the developer just kind of looked away. So I mean, it's, you know, you do, you do have a say.
You have potty status.
I don't think there's anything in the town plan about, uh, telecommunications towers and antennas.
Well, you can leave it, you can leave it in the bylaw, you know?
Yeah, okay.
And if you want, and then say.
Doesn't do any good, but we can leave it in the bylaw.
You could say, well, you know, I mean, if, if I were, if, if like, if I were your land use lawyer and wanted to get, you know, paid a lot of money, I could, I could probably, I could probably try to make a connection with the P U C and say, you know, if there's any ambiguity in the town plan, so let's say there's some language in your town plan about public health, safety, aesthetics, things like that, say, and the way, the way you get clarification is to, about what your plan is supposed to mean is to something to go look at the implementing bylaws. So even if you're implementing bylaws can't themselves be implemented, maybe you could, you could use that as an argument.
You would have been a good lawyer.
I think it might be worth. I think it might be worth us thinking about on what grounds would we object?
On what grounds would we object to a telecommunications tower?
Right.
Height?
Well.
Things like that.
Could be other things. But at least that would be something that we could take to.
And we just have to put in.
Yeah.
Because I mean, that was the very, that was the big deal. We had to with, with Act one seventy-four, we had to closely identify where energy, uh, the big commercial endeavors could go and more importantly, not go and why not? And I'm not sure why. I remember it being brought up and then I don't think any, I don't think it made the final.
Telecom stuff.
I don't think it did, but I'll, I'll take a look again. I just.
Some of the, some of the original, when, when this, these things first were getting drafted, that the, um, the concerns were aesthetics, like, oh, you know, okay. And they were also concerned about radiation levels.
Right.
Well, the cell phone tower, we've got a cell phone tower.
The old micro, yeah, microwave, yeah.
I remember going to a, a workshop on it, up, up at the top of Mount Equinox. And there was a consultant, you know, when there used to be that restaurant up there and stuff a long time ago.
It's still there, isn't it?
Well, they tore the restaurant hotel down and now there's just like a observation building. But, um.
I'll take a closer look.
But the, there was a consultant up there at this workshop with all these, um, like ra- you know, meters that measured the radiation from the, the, um, uh, facility, the antenna facilities up there. And he was like, oh, this is like, you know, six times above the, you know, the, the standards. It should be a lot.
Chernobyl.
Yeah. So again, everybody else kind of freaked out. But I mean, you know, that, that it's like.
Buried in plastic before that's even.
It's like, it's like in the, in the last like twenty years since that, right? Everybody is like,
Yeah, right, yeah.
Can no longer live without these things. So, so like that concern seems to have faded.
Just push a little further away from my house and we're good. As long as I can still get reception.
Um, so then, um, cut, the rest of this section three, a couple of real minor things, um, three point one four was kind of, I just changed the wording a little bit, um, in, instead of saying, yeah, this basically says, you know, if, if you have more than one house on a, on a lot, has to be located so that, you know, if the, they do a subdivision in the future, that the two buildings could both meet the setback requirements and the minimum lot size requirements. But the way it's reading, it says, if more than one dwelling is placed on a lot, such, but I was like, well, that's not really good language because there could be like two dwellings inside one building. So you couldn't, that doesn't make any sense in that context. So I just, you should just change it to principal residential building instead of dwelling.
It's too bad because dwelling is so much. It's such a nice language.
Yeah. Well, maybe I.
That's Megan's deal, right?
Maybe, maybe, if you could come up with some, some, some more eloquent language to describe.
Oh, let's do elegant language.
Yeah, there you go. See, that's even better.
Can we take these? And then, um, so now section three point one five, so that's, that's, now it's, um, the, your bylaw references section forty-four oh nine of the Planning and Development Act and that's now, there is no forty-four oh nine anymore. It's forty-four thirteen.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I, I find that that's maybe not really helpful because it doesn't really give a lot of guidance to those things. It used to be in there just kind of like, well, these things can be done anywhere. And they just throw it aside. But I, I, I really think that you can say now where you want these things. Now, A is gone. See, that's gone from the list in the statute because that's, that's things that you can't regulate in zoning. But the other stuff is still there. But if somebody wants to do like a, you know, a hospital or something, you know, the way I read the statute now is like, you can, you have to allow it somewhere in town. But you, you can, you, you don't have to allow it like in the forest district. So, so my suggestion is that you take these uses and put them in the districts where you think they're appropriate.
Okay.
And then you know which setbacks and things apply to them. So, so I don't think you really need that section because you just take those uses and stick them in the, in each district. And then, um, again, um, in three point one six referral to, uh, state departments, that, that's been changed a lot. There used to be a couple of different things that would, you were required to refer to, um, the state. Now, the only thing that I can find that you're required to refer to the state is development in a so-called, in a flood or other hazard area, which generally means river corridor area if you have river corridor regulations.
Yep.
So I just changed the language to be consistent with the statute on that one.
Okay. Makes sense.
And that is as far as I got. That was section three.
That's enough.
Good stuff, though. Good stuff. So we need to review those.
Yeah, you can review those. I mean, what I'll do before the next meeting is, um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start creating the new bylaw with those revisions in it. And then we can tweak those based on what you guys decide after you've gone, thought about these for a month. And then, um, I'll, I will, at the same time, I will, um, create a section of notes like this for section four.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. So we should start looking at four and possibly even five for the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, four is not gonna be too complicated, I don't think anyway. Five is gonna start getting really complicated because it's talking about the, the land use districts and and getting into which uses should be allowed and what should the dimensional standards be and stuff like that.
Yeah, most of four still applies, I think. I mean, it's pretty basic.
Yeah, actually, it's not a lot. There's a few things in four that I noted. We could clean up a little bit, but, um.
So you wanna do four and five next time or just four?
Well, I would just do four and I would say because five's complicated and because I'm going on vacation for two weeks between now and the next meeting.
Four it is.
And so I'm not gonna get that much.
Four it is, and then we'll review what you begin to write up.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I wanna say, um, one thing that, um, this process is obviously open to the public. And for those of you viewing at home, I wanna encourage you to come in and participate in this. You can see the amount of fun we had here tonight. It is fun.
Gonna dry, kind of, yeah.
It is an ongoing town endeavor, not just your planning commission. It's gonna be open to the public. It always is, all of these meetings. We will have hearings when we come to some kind of final document. But the town's input is critical as well. But I'm glad you're here. And the more people that we have, in fact, you know, I believe it is a condition of our grant that we very closely involve the public. So more to come on that later, but just wanted to let everybody know that. All right.
They're gonna rush in here. They're all gonna come here.
Well, that's okay.
You're gonna get us in trouble.
I don't expect, I don't expect, yeah, we need to, we need to, we probably should let the webmaster know that the work has begun on changing the bylaws and that the town's input is critical.
So what is section four? We could, I mean, we could.
Section four is mostly administration, you know, it's the hiring of a zoning administrator, the appointment of a planning, you know, thou shall appoint a planning commission, you know, to, how, how is your town, how are all these bylaws? Who carries them out? Who creates them? That's all that section four is saying. But there's, I think the thing that Jim's referring to is that, that the cleanup will be, it'll refer to V S A's Vermont statutes that may not exist anymore, have been amended and, you know, that, that's just needs cleaning up. That's all. Five is a different thing.
Five will be more controversial. Yeah, okay. So that's what people.
If people are, I suppose, respond to that because then you, you're starting to get, you know, geographical, you're saying.
Get to the meat of it and setbacks and.
This part of town has these standards.
Well, even setbacks and things like that, you know, as you talk about different types of, um, what did you refer to the, I've forgotten already, no, no offense, instead of a cluster subdivision.
Oh, planned unit development.
Yeah, and, and a PUD instead of a PUC. Right, right. And, and that's where you'll get everybody's attention and their input is necessary. So, you know, we just have to be prepared to explain why, you know, why Jim is recommending that, you know, based on best practices and why we either agree or disagree with him on that. But, you know, we opened this up, just like we did the, the town plan. I thought it went a lot better than it had. We just kind of sprung it on people, you know? We had a lot of input from a lot of people, so.
There's, you know, there's some, there's some good examples, some graphics too, that, you know, we can use like to illustrate when you, if you're talking about different form-based standards.
Yeah.
You know, so you can say, what, what is it, what does a lot look like if it's developed this way versus that way? You know, so.
Yeah, that would be useful.
I don't know if the, the, all of the, the topics that Minnakozy, Minnakozy, am I pronouncing it that correctly?
I think so.
You know, he talked about tax efficiency in development. And I, to me, there is a direct correlation when you're changing your zoning and bylaws to that. I, you know, it could be as much form-based as you described, as you go from the center of the town where you can do this, do that, and it changes with each. I don't know. I, e- even though our town is made up differently, um, with three kind of different centers, I think some of that can apply. And, and I, I think sometimes people think the, the answer for Pownell's woes is to get a super large, giant manufacturing firm in here employing twenty-two people. Boy, you wanna listen to that guy talk and he'll tell you, it's absolutely not the way to develop. Not from a tax efficiency or a revenue point of view or an aesthetic point of view.
That's right.
He said, he said, you build them, you, you, you put that retail on the first floor, you put the business on the second floor. You have two more floors of housing on top of it. And the efficiency in, uh, what do you call it? Uh, tax efficiency per acre compared to a Walmart is stunning. And he then went into the actual dollars. And, and this goes on, this is the history of Asheville and other towns, including towns in Vermont and Maine that he has done work for.
Does he, you're referencing is?
This is the guy that spoke at their annual meeting and he was phenomenal. I, I wish it was on tape. I wish that this planning commission and D R B could see that.
I don't think so. I, I think he's, he's got some, some stuff there.
He probably does.
Yeah, his, you know, his, and his thesis is basically like what, what development pattern is best for, you know, for municipality, for efficiency and for rev- net revenue generation. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not like, you know, a large manufacturing or a large retail business is bad. It would be very, very good. It's, what's really important is where it's located and it's also, because if you have something that's, you know, way out, you're basically subsidizing that by providing, you know,
Services.
The services and the transportation. And because everybody has to drive to it, you've got this big parking lot that doesn't generate any revenue. So it is, you know, it's really, it's bigger than just the divi- So it is, you know, it's really, it's bigger than just the development, it's the overall land use planning in a town. It basically says, you're going to do a whole lot better as a town if you concentrate your development, you know? Not all of it, obviously, but if you, if you concentrate a good share of your development in, in these, you know, more compact mixed-use areas, um, you, you're, you're not, you're not spending as much money on infrastructure and you're generating a lot of tax revenue on a relatively small land base.
Exactly.
So it's.
It was fascinating.
It's, yeah, and, and his, his.
What's his name again?
Um.
Joe.
Joe Minicozzi.
Minicozzi.
And does he have a book out or something that?
Oh, he probably has.
Oh, yeah.
Supposed to start traveling. He's, I forget the, I forget the name of his consulting.
If you just Google Joe Minicozzi, you'll get all of that information.
Cutzy.
Yeah. I, I thought he was great and I really appreciate it now. That was, that was terrific. Everything else was good too.
He's Italian.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Uh, when's the vacation, by the way? Is it in July?
Um, it ended June, beginning of July.
Cause our next, our next meeting.
Trying to get you.
Oh, no, it'll make its way through my thinning hair and bite my head.
Our next meeting will be the sixteenth.
Could you hear it?
They like it.
Are you gonna bust? I, I had to open it. It was, uh, July sixteenth is the next, is the third Tuesday.
Okay.
And that'll be our next meeting.
Anyway, July sixteenth, dream. July sixteenth, yeah, I'll be back. I don't know how much I'll have done.
Applications for zoning administrator. I'm gonna talk about it in a second here.
July sixteenth.
I don't think we need to have any special meetings or work sessions as of yet. I don't think we're under any deadline to have that done.
And Jim, you mentioned that normally, like on section four, we'll get this information before our meeting.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll do my best to get you guys something, um, at least a few days in advance.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm a tight timeframe because I'm just gonna be getting back from vacation.
Right, this time it might not happen, but in general.
Yeah.
Yeah, going forward.
Absolutely. No, it's, it's definitely much more helpful, productive, if you guys have it in advance. Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Well, thank you, sir.
Well, have a good trip.
Yeah, have a great trip.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, it's a good start. Everybody knows where Jim is if you have a couple hundred questions for him in the middle of the day. They love it. You can also just pop right in there, they love that too.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
It's good to see you guys.
Take care.
Bye.
Take care. A couple of things, this is, uh, we had passed the, uh, planning commission rules of procedure and I'm gonna ask each of us to, uh, to sign it um, as we had done in the past. So I'll just pass it around and I'll keep the original or I'll give the secretary the original. So a quick update here before we sign off. And I don't think there's anything else that we need, right? There's. Mail, there is no mail, so we don't have to do anything. We've already started updating the, or discussion of the bylaws and we're signing on the rules of procedure. We, um, Nelson's term as DA, as most of you know, ends on, uh, July second. I've been going back and forth, um, with the town, hoping that we had some applicants for the zoning administrator. I haven't talked to Michael Walker in a week and a half or so, but as of a week and a half ago, there were none. And one of the things that Michael is talking to the select board about, I believe, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stick his neck out too far here, is that the zoning administrator position pays a staggering three hundred dollars a month plus a little bit of expenses. And that could have something to do with the fact that we're not getting some real zoning experts to apply for this. So he's approached the, um, he's approached the select board with that issue. You know, I had recommended before, uh, they're also posted the, the, the health officer. And I had said before, if you put both of those together, you know, then you've got six hundred a month and plus expenses, somebody could operate, uh, if both of those could be a part-time job, literally. One together could be a part-time job. And they didn't want it, the board didn't want to do that. They wanna keep those functions separate. I, I, and I completely understand that.
Different, very different thing.
Well, they are. Well, they are. Bylaws and health are, health ordinance are two different things, so that, that made sense. So, um, I think the thing for them to do, because they look for us to make the recommendation on a zoning administrator, but we can't do that unless we have people to talk to. I'm gonna recommend that they ask Nelson to stay on for a month until they iron out the details as far as do they pay somebody some, some, do they?
Money?
Check around, you know, see, go to Shasbury and that's a part-time position, see what they pay. You know, go to Clark'sburg, find out what's going on. Cause last time, you might remember, we had five or six or seven applicants, six years ago. And from, from all over the place, from out of town, from Bennington, from, and then the last time, we had none and this time we have none so far. So unless there are other problems that I don't know of, it's probably the money issue and the time commitment.
Or the economy's a little more, it's more.
Yeah, right, so people either, yeah, somebody's gonna have to. Somebody's gonna have to want this job because they have an interest in zoning and municipal bylaw, I think. Two or three of the people that came before us before did. And I asked, um, Michael to take out their old resumes and see if they're still available. So I don't know. We, the, the only reason I bring this up is if, if they don't ask Nelson to stand on, um, and we do have two or three applicants, I may call a special meeting to interview those, those applicants.
Okay.
So that we can at least make a recommendation to the board. To get somebody in that position.
Be a tough one.
Well, I, it's, it's already controversial, you know, I mean.
It's the consensus of us is though, to, to.
Oh, as to who?
Do we wanna, do we wanna go this way or that way? We're not gonna please anybody.
No, no.
It's fifty-fifty.
On the one hand, you know, if we want somebody to be really, really to the letter of the law, that's gonna be an issue. And then the, you know, the, uh, you know, people perceive now that the bylaws aren't followed and.
No enforcement.
And Michael Walker's talking about, uh, junk ordinance and things like that. So those two are coming together, but with, however, it says, write our bylaws that we need a zoning administrator, so we're gonna have to come up, we're gonna have to put our heads together and, and, um, and tackle that one.
Is that, could that be a function of the, uh, select board?
It will be, we're just recommending to them.
Wait, the, the law states that we.
To do, to do the functions of the zoning administrator themselves.
Oh, you know what? Good, good question. I don't know who it falls upon. I wonder if it falls upon the town administrator.
I thought I read somewhere that, that some, some communities have, you know, the select board can do that.
I think Walker also do it temporarily.
I, you think he would? Well, I think he's already doing some of the health officer stuff.
He has, he's made some call to some people, some of my customers said he's called them up and some neighbor complained.
I mean.
Lots of Jones.
Look at that board, this guy's got a lot on his plate, a lot on his plate, so to have a separate zone. I, I guess, you know, he, we can't rest, we need somebody. So you may get a call from me if we can get five people together.
Okay.
Um, to interview, you know, some night on a Tuesday night.
It's a warm night in July.
Yeah, we've got a nice toasty night here.
An optimist.
Who is, uh, Bennington's, uh, zoning, zoning administrator? Do you know that, what's his name?
Dan Monks.
Monk.
Oh.
Well, I don't know if he's the enforcer or not. Probably is. I'd have to, I'd have to check. I know that, um.
The enforcer.
The enforcer. Well, that, literally, somebody, that's what a zoning administrator does, they enforce that.
Not one of the pretty words, so is it?
I don't know Shelley's last name, but, um.
Not like dwelling.
Michael Badgers, uh, our former consultant there, his significant other is the, uh, DA up in, um, Shasbury. And they live in Housak Falls. So, you know.
So it doesn't have to be a resident?
No, we have. We had several breeds. Yeah. He was a finalist, yeah.
He was a finalist.
And we had a guy who was grossly overqualified from Bennington. I mean, this guy was, he would have been great, but we won't go into details as to why he didn't get the job.
Great to whom?
Yeah, right, right, right.
He has that word.